Hello everyone and welcome. My name is Danielle Lard. I'm a teacher here at Algonquin College in the School of Media and Design. I split my time between Public Relations, Music Industry Arts, and Performing Arts. And it's such a pleasure to be here this evening, sharing some live music with you, as live as I've been able to experience music in these past few months. So thanks so much for having me. This is a cover song called "Black and Gold" by Sam Sparrow. When the fish went out of the ocean, they grew legs and they started walking. And the apes climbed down from the trees. They grew tall and they started talking. The stars fell out of the sky. And my tears rolled into the ocean. But I am looking for the reason why you even set my world into motion. If you're not really here, then the stars don't even matter. But love will fail to the top with fear that it's all just a bunch of matter. If you're not really here, then the stars don't even matter. But love will fail to the top with fear that it's all just a bunch of matter. If you're not really here, then the stars don't even matter. But love will fail to the top with fear that it's all just a bunch of matter. Yeah, I look up into the night sky and see a pair of eyes staring back. And all around these golden beacons, I see nothing but black. I feel the weight of something beyond them. I don't know what I should feel. If vision is the only validation, then most of my life isn't real. But you're not really here. Thanks so much for listening. Again, my name is Danielle Lard. I'm a teacher in the School of Media and Design, Music Industry Arts, Performing Arts, and Public Relations Program. Thanks so much for having me for another Town Hall. Super, super happy to be able to play live music with you.
Well, that was awesome. Ladies and gentlemen, it's Danielle Lard.
Thanks so much.
Yeah, favorite musician. This is wonderful. Always puts us in the right mood, you know? It's wonderful. I love the way you use technology. There were two Danielle a minute ago. That was great.
Thanks Claude. Thanks everyone.
All right. Take care. Okay, so welcome everyone to our first evening Town Hall. I think, at least, I believe it's our first evening Town Hall that we're doing. So welcome. As part of our gatherings that we do, and as part of our becoming again, in our indigeneity, we always do an opening address. And the reason we do an opening address and a closing address is to convey the words that we need to say before all else as we embark on something important as a community, so that we can come together in a good way and with a good mind. And so tonight I will offer the opening address, and Ron will do the closing address at the end. And so we offer to the Creator our prayers, tobacco, and our hearts. We say thank you to the grandfathers and the grandmothers of yesterday, today, and tomorrow for keeping the knowledge and for their wisdom. We say thank you to the spirits of the winds, the water, fire, and earth. We say thank you to the spirits of the north, the east, the south, and the west. And we ask the Creator to please help us to live our lives in a good way. Mi Guache. And now I will introduce members of our panel this evening, not in any particular order, but I'll ask them to put on their camera just to wave so that you know who they are. Mark Savinkoff, who's our VP of Advancement. Chris Jensen, our Senior Vice President Academic. Dwayne McNair, our VP Finance and Administration. Diane McCutcheon, our VP Human Resources. Laura Stenbrough, our VP Student Services. Tracy McDougall, Director of the President's Office and Communication. Ron McLester, Vice President of Truth, Reconciliation, and Indigenization. And Colin Banang, our Director of Risk Management. And by the way, I want to give credit to Eric Marwa, who's our Dean of the School of Advanced Technology. He was the one who suggested that at the last Town Hall that we should have an evening Town Hall. And so credit to Eric for that suggestion. So before we go into questions and answers, I would like to have some housekeeping tidbits for you. If you're having any kind of technical difficulty or questions, you can always reach through the chat box, and our event team will be able to assist you. We do have closed caption, and it's available by clicking the closed caption on the button on the main bar of your Zoom application. You can ask a question in different ways. You can raise your hand. So there's a raise your hand feature. If you raise your hand, it will pop up at the top of the attendee list, and I will be able to call out your name. And when I call out your name, you will need to unmute yourself, and then you can chat with the panel. Alternatively, you can put your question by typing it in the Q&amp;A box, so not the chat box, in the Q&amp;A box. So there's a Q&amp;A button on your main bar, and you can go in there, type in your questions. I will read it, and then I'll point to one of our subject matter expert to answer your question. We only have an hour this evening, so if you have more questions than we have time for, we will collect the rest of the questions that are in the Q&amp;A, and then we'll proceed to answer them, and then we'll post those to my AC in the coming days. Now, if you're watching this through another mean other than, I'm not sure we have that tonight, but it's possible that we have YouTube set up as well. If we do have YouTube set up and you're watching us through that channel, submit your question through the chat on YouTube, and our events team will get the question to me. Sounds good? All right. Before, again, lots of things are happening at the college, and I know you have lots of questions. I also want to make sure that I have an opportunity to share with you some of the success stories that we have at the college. And we have almost something every day that's worth mentioning and worth celebrating. I know earlier this week, we launched our new branding for our SIS Renewal Project. So that's our Student Information System project. And that was on Monday. And for those of you who are able to partake in that. We also had yesterday our AC Engage event, which was fantastic. The one I want to focus on, though, is the events that took place last week. We had a complete week of events related to taking a stand, which was aiming to disrupt Black and Indigenous racism. We have a circle, the college called the Inclusion and Diversity Circle. And along with Indigenous and Black advisors and the support of our entire college community, they delivered a top-notch series of events, 10 events in total with 24 speakers and performers. And this series of events coincided with the start of Black History Month. So a lot of great, great events to partake in. Some of them were meant to make us uncomfortable a little bit and be comfortable with that uncomfort, if you wish. It was meant to build awareness and offering us an opportunity to learn about racism, how to become anti-racist, provide an opportunity to have a more visible commitment and support of our Black and Indigenous members of our community, celebrate the rich history and culture of Black people and Indigenous peoples, and encourage our community to take action, big or small, to foster a more inclusive college. Overall, we had over 800 people participating in these events of that week. So I know that it went a long way to create that awareness, and we're still having a lot of great conversation. And I know we will continue to have great conversations about what we learned and how we're going to take action based on what we learned. So thank you to the teams that have put this together, and thank you for all of you who participated in those events. So without further ado, we'll go to our question and answer. Again, two ways you can ask your question. You can raise your hand, and I'm going to go right into the attendee list here. There we go. I see my attendee list. And you can just put up your hand, and you'll be able to go live and answer, sorry, ask your question, and then engage with the panel. Or alternatively, you can go into the Q&amp;A and type your question, and we'll be more than happy to read your question, and someone or someone's answer it for you. So we've got some things in the chat here. Sometimes our events team will put some tidbits and additional information that can be useful. I saw somebody here, quick flash, they put up their hand, and then they hand went down. Don't be shy. This is your time. We created this space for you. And, you know, just pretend we're in Nawaupun. You know, we're in an indigenous space altogether. Just picture that. You know, we got this huge circle of chairs, and I'm in the middle with a microphone. Remember those old days when we were face to face? And you could just put up your hand. Somebody would walk a microphone to you, and then you'd just ask your question away here. Same thing, except we're on Zoom. Don't be shy. If you've got something on your mind, that's what we created the event for. All right, well, we got a question in our Q&amp;A, so I'll go to that. And then, oh, two questions. All right. First question comes to us from Abdullah Kadri. Says, "Hello. Thanks for this kind opportunity. I have a question about your forecasting of student enrollment for this year and next year." Great question, Abdullah. I know that, you know, the pandemic has caused a bit of a ripple in everybody's projections for enrollment. And we have a team that works diligently to ensure we do as accurate forecasts as we can, given that we don't have all the answers during this pandemic. There's still a bit of uncertainty, especially as it relates to restrictions in travel and how this is impacting our international students. Let's see, I want to turn to, I have two vice presidents here who sit and are co-sponsor of our Strategic Enrollment Management Committee. So I will turn it over to Chris and Laura and Asim, if they could answer that question for you.
Thanks Claude. Thanks Abdullah. It is always a bit of a challenge, and Claude's right. The pandemic has upset the apple cart, if you will, in how we normally are able to predict what our enrollments will be. There are all sorts of new and challenging variables that we don't have a history with. That said, we are doing our best, and we are looking forward to the, you know, a good spring term and a good fall term. But we are not yet forecasting our enrollments to be back to where they were prior to the pandemic. Well, in part because we're still living through the pandemic. Certainly in terms of international students, we know that there's a significant demand for our programming from abroad. Yet we have a number of difficulties. I mean, travel bans, the new restrictions on needing to quarantine in a government-approved hotel after coming into only one of three airports. Any number of challenges. But with that said, without going into numbers, which I would really hesitate to do off the top of my head, we are projecting good, solid enrollments. And maybe Laura could chime in and add a little bit more detail?
Happy to. And I was trying to pull up our last week's, our last report on enrollment, and my system is very slow. So sorry about that. What I can say also is that spring, this coming spring, is very strong. That's due to recruitment efforts, but also, you know, more so, I would say, in terms of new programs, new offerings being launched. So that is offsetting some of the challenges that we're having with our international students who may have barriers coming here. So that certainly helped. And we're definitely looking to, we have targets to grow our enrollment for this fall. So, you know, things are looking good. We are cautiously optimistic. We are doing well within the College Ontario system. We're actually often at the very top or, you know, at the top three of how we're performing, both in terms of applicants and then converting those applicants into confirmed students here at the college. So, and as Chris and Claude may have mentioned, that we meet every week with very detailed enrollment reports with a number, all of our deans and some of our directors really watching very carefully and doing everything we can to make sure that we do keep that enrollment strong. And really, it's all about living up to our mission of transforming hopes and dreams into lifelong success and getting students into programs they want to be in and reassuring them of, no matter what modality that we're delivering, that they'll get a quality education. So hopefully that answers the question. If not, please, please feel free to resubmit to more.
Well, and if I could just follow up one last point. Yes, Laura and I are used to doing a tag team when it comes to this. While the projections that we have moving forward are moving in a positive direction, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that our enrollments went down significantly during this past year. And it's that drop in enrollment by approximately 15% that has caused a great deal of challenge. So when we say that we're looking good for next year, that doesn't mean that we are going to be at a fully recovered, back to pre-COVID numbers yet. We will still be down next year. It's going to take us about three years to fully recover from the pandemic. At least, that's our current projection. We'd be delighted, and we are working very hard to try to achieve that outcome sooner rather than later. But there's a lot of hard work ahead still.
Okay, thank you very much. A very comprehensive answer for both Chris and Laura. We have one live question, so we'll go to the live question, and then I'll come back to our written question. So I have Anna Labelle. So Anna, you have unmuted yourself. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you for the floor. I was just wondering, I know Lynda.com is getting phased out as a resource that we could use, and I know that's really hard for many faculty right now, considering that we are online and many have been relying on this resource. Is there any alternative currently available to us or that will be made available soon that will have a similar function? Thank you.
Great question. Chris, I'm afraid I'm going to turn back to you on this one.
Yep. Well, there's the Lynda.com. There is, we currently do still have a college-wide license for LinkedIn Learn that is active through at least the end of August. It is, we want to make sure that we have the resources to support our faculty and the work that they do with students. And so I would suggest that if there's a critical need that we're not meeting, we do need to have that conversation. So I'd suggest that you reach out to your chair, and let's find a solution that does work. There are so many opportunities, so many different platforms and services available. I certainly don't have an exhaustive list. So if there's a particular need, work with your chair. We can also, I would suggest, work through learning and teaching services. They have a large portfolio of best practices and opportunities, and they'll be able to point you in a number of directions as well.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Anna. I'll go to our next question. And this question, I probably saw that one coming. I just have to say. Uh, given the events that occurred last week, so the Laurentian University filed for creditor protection last week. What has the conversation been around Algonquin's financial health? And can we expect more program suspensions, staff or faculty layoffs, et cetera, here? Um, I'll I'll start off a little bit at a high level and then I'll turn it, uh, to Dwayne. Uh, one thing that we we want to make clear is that, uh, the college as a system, there's twenty four colleges in Ontario. We operate under a common act, uh, from from government and that's the, um. CAP with two A's, so College of Applied Arts and Technology Act. And that act. Presents us as, uh, agencies of the crown. Uh, we don't operate like the universities that have their own independent act. All the universities in Ontario have a separate act with the government. They have more autonomy. Uh, we have more, I guess, accountability with our government and a framework for that. And that oversight, uh, is very clear in through our board as well and, uh, in the reports that are issued to government. With the specifics related to financial health, I'll turn it over to, uh, our Vice President of Finance, Dwayne McNair, to give you more detail.
Thank you Claude. Yes, this question came up this week, actually, when our Audit Risk Management Committee met, uh, just yesterday. And, uh, members of that committee were asking similar questions. So we did compile a bit of a comparison. Based on the most recent fiscal years for, uh, the college and Laurentian University. So their year end is April thirty. And ours is March thirty first, so. And just to put it in context, Laurentians, you know, could be characterized about, um, in terms of their size. A little less than half the size of Algonquin. So they have about nine thousand students. We're at about twenty two thousand pre-pandemic. And, uh, their revenues are a little less than half the revenues of Algonquin. Um, but we did, uh, look at a few metrics to, um, assess our health relative to theirs, just to reassure our governors. And and we have seven financial health indicators that we measure each year. And, uh, for the past at least five to eight years, we've been better than the benchmarks. Um, with with, uh, those financial health indicators. But as an example, last year, they, Laurentian had a deficit of about three million dollars. Whereas Algonquin had a surplus of about fourteen million dollars. They have an accumulated deficit that, uh, over the years, you know, as you run deficits, it it accumulates on their balance sheet. Uh, kind of the equivalent of an equity position for a private company. Their accumulated deficit is negative sixteen million dollars, whereas Algonquin's, um, net asset position is a positive one hundred and sixty-three million dollars. And another metric which is, um, notable is the, uh, the amount of debt. So they have about. Uh, ninety-one million dollars in long-term debt plus about fourteen million dollars in line of credit debt. So over a hundred million dollars in debt. Whereas Algonquin has about forty million dollars in debt. Um, so we we are, um, in, uh, relatively much better shape and even relative to the other Ontario colleges. We're in, we're in good financial health. And of course, all of this information is available on our website, but, uh, we did do that bit of analysis just to compare against Laurentian. With respect to program suspensions and, uh, potential layoffs, I'll call on my colleagues, uh, Chris and Diane, maybe to speak to those items.
Sure. With respect to the program suspensions, uh, we regularly, uh, meaning on an annual basis. Uh, review the 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 health of of each program. Um, yes, finances are a part of that, enrollments are a part of that, quality is a part of that. Um, ad- advice from advisory committees is is a part of that. Student satisfaction is a part of that. Uh, programs tend to have a lifetime. Um, they're, they they don't have an infinite lifetime. Um, some are, some have a shorter lifetime, some have a longer lifetime. And we need to make sure that the programming we are offering i- is meeting the needs of the students and the employers that will hire our graduates. And so the 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 pandemic has perhaps increased scrutiny of of our programs. But it hasn't changed our process in 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 really any meaningful way whatsoever. So. Um, program suspensions are a normal part of the of the of the life cycle, um, in the academic area. And and I'd be surprised if if one or two, um, don't happen over the next couple of years. But we're also bringing on lots of new programming at the same time. So. Um, it it's not just about program suspensions. We're also making sure that we're bringing the new programming in, uh, to meet the needs of employers. And with regards to layoffs, I will hand that off to my colleague Diane.
Thanks for that question. Uh, it's a great question to ask, you know, and and in the first, uh, question, Chris responded with, uh. A fact of about fifteen percent drop in enrollment from our pre-COVID time period. And we've also talked about a shift in our, uh, in our programs and what that looks like. And with that churn and change also comes some rightsizing, uh, of the organization, which is something that we are going through. And, um, it's very difficult to predict, uh, of course, um, what our workforce will be required. For as we continue to grow our enrollment and and change our enrollment and try to get back to those, um, uh, pre-COVID, uh, times. But we're doing everything that we can to avoid it. If we, if we possibly can, we're putting in all other precautions. But at the, at the same time, it is incumbent upon us to ensure that we are, um, meeting our our financial responsibility to our board. And if that does mean layoffs, then we will be doing that. But we do do that at the very last option. So I hope that answers your question.
Okay, thank you very much to Dwayne, Chris and Diane. Um, the next question, uh, I have is a little bit of a longer one, so bear with me. So. Why, when we are asked to develop a course or redevelop a course, are we not automatically offered a contract? Nine out of, I guess, nine times out of ten, I have had to ask my chair whether I will be compensated. This is hard, sometimes embarrassing to always have to ask for money. It should be standard practice to be offered a standard contract to do course development. Okay, um, so I guess, uh, Chris, I'll, uh, start off with you.
Absolutely. I could not agree more. Um, if we are, if we are asking an individual to do work. Uh, we should be compensating them for it i- in an appropriate manner, period. Uh, so if you're asked to develop a brand new course, absolutely, you should, you should have, that should be reflected in your contract. Um, in terms of a standard contract, we, the, we, and our, our, our academic department development, academic department. Let's try that again. Academic Development Department. I was thinking too far ahead. I can get this out. Uh, Academic Development Department, um, has guidelines for for that sort of compensation. Um, and it does, it does vary from course to course, the, the amount of work necessary to develop a forty-five hour course is different. The amount of work necessary to develop a sixty-hour course. Um, so in in terms of a standard contract, it it it, we 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 have, we we do have a framework for which compensation should be, should be offered. Uh, redeveloping a course is also, um, something that you should be compensated for. Although I note that there's a difference between a a minor alteration, a moderate change and a major redevelopment of a course. Uh, so if it's simply the normal. Continuous improvement, while I taught the course last semester, I'm gonna teach it again next semester, but I need to do some tweaks. That's generally considered to be part of the preparation to teach the course. But if it truly is a a more significant, uh, redevelopment of a course, absolutely, you should be compensated for. And and that should be something that you're offered automatically without having to, without having to, uh, ask your chair to to actually. Pay you for what you're, what you're doing. So I will, uh, my 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 pledge to you is in my next Chair's Council meeting, I will make sure that I reiterate. Uh, this expectation so that hopefully you won't have to ask again, uh, when you're asked for to to develop a course.
And typically, what we consider to be a significant, uh. Change to a course is, uh, twenty-five to thirty percent of wholesale change to that course. That would be considered. A significant or a major change to a course. Okay, thank you very much, Chris. Uh, our next question is as follows. So let's make sure I got the right one here. Oh, if vaccine rollout goes more smoothly and we're all crossing our fingers, making sure it does. Will there be any reconsideration for being online this fall and going back to face-to-face classes? Wow, I think yes. Uh, we would all want nothing more than be able to be back on campus and, uh, doing everything in person. Uh, but that's a big if, um, and, uh, I'd like to give, uh, Colin an opportunity to weigh in on this. Because, yeah, he's, uh, helped advise us a lot on all things related to health and safety and their regulations during this time of pandemic, Colin.
Thank you Claude. And, uh, yeah, I think there there are a few big ifs in that, uh, in that question. If on the the vaccine rollout goes more smoothly. Um, certainly, there's another factor that we that we need to pay attention to and that's, you know, what is happening with COVID nineteen. While that vaccine rollout is happening. Um, so, uh, we we do anticipate continuing to follow public health guidance on, uh, reopening. Uh, everyone's aware that next week, we're waiting to hear, um, where we're going to be in terms of reopening, um, it within the framework. Um, but as time goes on, as the vaccine rolls out, we anticipate that there will be ongoing opportunities to to, um. Slowly get back to normal operations and, uh, but we fully anticipate that it might be a a staged process. Uh, so certainly as, as we're allowed to to resume, uh, you know, uh, more operations on campus. Uh, I I expect everyone's quite eager, uh, to be able to to fulfill those opportunities and, uh, and start getting us back to campus. I do know that we've, we've planned, uh, not to be, uh, but we're certainly, um. More than willing to take advantage of any opportunity to to have more activity on campus than than what we have planned.
It's gonna be a transition. Let's face it. I mean, we're we're not gonna be, you know, unlike the, the lockdown. Where in March it was, we're all on campus one day and gone the next. The reverse will not be true, that, uh, you know, we're not all away from campus and suddenly one day to the next, we'll be back. There's gonna be a period of transition, a period of ramp up. Uh, likely that there is gonna be measures that will remain in place for some time. Uh, even though we do have vaccination in place, because it will depend on the degree to which we achieve, um. Heard or population immunity. So, but we're following this, uh, development closely. And, um, as as time progresses, we'll be able to make decisions and inform the college community. Uh, what our posture will look like, uh, for the fall. Okay, our next question comes from, um, Amir Afraziyabie Rod. Hello, thank for the opportunity as well. Does the college forecast consider a move to more remote learning structure? Brackets, mix of remote and in-person classes for the courses that, uh, used to be in person? After the pandemic ends. So are we gonna have more remote, um, after the pandemic ends? Chris, you wanna take a stop of this?
Sure, happy to. Uh, you know, ever since the pandemic hit, my my favorite phrase has been, um. Necessity is the mother of invention. Uh, the college has done a truly remarkable job. Uh, from the, from the first week that, uh, we we suspended classes to allow folks to put their courses into a remote delivery in an emergency basis. Um, then on to the spring term where we had a little bit more runway and a little bit more breathing space and. And did a much better job in the spring term. And now in the fall term, now in the winter term, we've been getting better and better and better. And and learning to do things that we didn't even think were possible, uh, prior to the hit of the pandemic. I do not want to throw out, uh, those things that are working really, really well. And by working really, really well, I I come back to the the learner-driven plan. Um, which put very simply is is designed to meet the students, meet our learners where they are. Get them to where they need to go in ways that work for them. And so flexibility is a significant part of that. So one of the things that we are looking at and we're we're starting to build capacity to do is something we call high flex. Uh, which is the opportunity to have both in-person, uh, and remote learning happening at the same time. There's the option of having it be, uh, synchronous remote. There's the option of having it be asynchronous remote. Um, but but really, for example, a student could then, um, choose on any given day whether they wanted to be in person. Or whether they had a a childcare problem and needed to study from home that day. Um, and participate in the class remotely that day. So any number of those sorts of things. What we've learned about simulation, what we've learned about being able to do what we initially thought absolutely positively had to be done face to face. Well, we've, we've learned some valuable lessons and discovered some things that we can, we can do differently. Not any worse, not any better, but differently. And some of these things may allow folks in more remote, more remote locations, uh, to actually be able to fully participate. Without needing to come to Ottawa to be able to participate. So there's all kinds of very exciting things, uh, that we've learned. They, they haven't been easy lessons, I grant you. Uh, but we have learned a lot of stuff. And so I would suggest that when we come back out of the pandemic. It's not going to look like what it did before we went into the pandemic. Uh, this, this concept of returning to normal, uh, normal doesn't mean the same. It's going to be different. And so we're, we are going to embrace those things that work really well for our students and the college. And I'll stop with that. I get a little passionate about that one. I'm really excited by the things that we've learned.
I I was just gonna say, could you do it one more time with a bit more passion, Chris?
Oh, hush Claude.
All right, no, well answered, Chris. Thank you. Um, okay, we'll go to a live question here. I've got, uh. Kashi or Cassie Taush, if you can unmute yourself, your floor is yours.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for sitting this town hall in the evening. Uh, so my question is similar to the previous one. I was wondering if you have statistics. On how this remote learning is performing so far from student satisfaction point of view. That's my question.
Well, it's a, it's a great question. How do you pronounce your first name, by the way?
Casey, Casey Taush.
Okay, Casey. Well, it's a great question and, uh, that's something and I, and I will turn to to Chris in a minute. Because that touches, uh, in part on, um, his domain, but maybe also on Laura's domain around student services. Uh, that that's certainly something we generally concern ourselves with, no matter what. Because we we want to hear the voice of our students, how their student experience is going. And so we survey our students, uh, on a regular basis. Typically after each term, we do, uh, course feedback. We've modified, uh, that course feedback, um, in part because of, uh, you know, the situation. We want to know more specifically how the students are are, uh, attending to their, their academic pursuit during this pandemic. How they're adapting to the remote learning. Do they have the tools on the home front in order to be successful in their studies? So we've modified our surveys, we've administered it twice now, I believe. And, uh, you know, all the lessons learned from that are being incorporated into our our future delivery. Um, and of course, we don't wait for surveys. I have to say, if something, uh, comes up that, uh, is an issue of concern. We, uh, listen and we act on it. But in addition to that, we do those surveys. So I want to turn to to Chris in case he has some specific points, uh, statistical points he can bring to bear and then to Laura as well.
What Claude said. Uh, one of those joyous, joyous times of following behind Claude where he gave, uh, pretty much the exact, exact answer I was going to. But let me, let me follow up with a, with a few other tidbits. Uh, that program review that I talked about earlier as well. Uh, we do look at success rates, uh, in programs, in 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 individual courses. Uh, but we do, we tend to do that on an annual basis. So we haven't, uh, we haven't done it yet. We'll, we'll, we'll do it again. Um, when it's a little bit quieter. We'll 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 do it again when it's a little bit quieter during the during the summer months. And and so that is one of the things that would be comparing. What was for this particular course, what was the success rate before the pandemic? What was the success rate after the pandemic? What impact did the the delivery mode had? But the results that of the of the two student experience surveys that Claude had mentioned do very strongly demonstrate that students are becoming more satisfied with their remotely delivered courses. This, this is, while we would love to take full credit for that and 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 give ourselves a well deserved pat on the back and say, job well done. It can also in part be that our students are getting used to a remotely delivered course. So it's a little bit of both. It's the students getting used to it. It's the faculty getting used to delivering the education in that in that mode. It's students, student support services, learning to better deliver their services during this. So it's, it's been a learning curve. But it is something we are paying very close attention to.
Yeah, that was my feeling too from from my students. They seem liking this remote learning. Of course, some of them are telling me that they are missing the face to face, but they they like it, they like the 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 flexibility of learning remotely. Definitely. Thanks for the answer.
Okay, thank you very much, Casey and Laura. Did you have anything you wanted to add to this?
The only thing I would add is, you know, even in with face to face for for student services, you know, creating awareness of, you know, where the services are, how they're available is always challenges. An extra challenge, certainly in these times of the pandemic and learning remotely. But one one big lesson we we, you know, we focus very closely on from the students' feedback of these surveys is we were noticing particularly for the library, they're having difficulties navigating how to use library remotely. So that was a focus point that we took up and and we saw in the second surveys, the numbers went up because we were trying different outreach and awareness. So just again, back to that, yeah, we're looking at what they're saying and we're trying to take actions from those from that feedback, very concrete action to improve that. And and and, you know, it's incrementally, it is working. So thank you for the question.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Thank you, Chris. Okay, our next question comes from Leon Manukin. I am at the college three times a week for face to face ADM labs. I do the COVID mobile self screening every time as required. However, I often come in before seven AM to print documents, do final prep for the lab, et cetera. And the doors at P building are open and I walk in and with no security guard, no checking of my green status. I feel this diminishes our assertion that we are following all the quote unquote rules, regulations. Please note that even at six AM arrival, I'm not the only car in the parking lot. So I'm not unique in arriving before the doors are monitored. Do you have a solution to really ensure our safety? Great question, Leon. And first of all, I applaud your dedication to be at the college so early to prep for your classes. Bravo. And I will turn this to Colin for an answer.
Thank you, Claude. And yeah, it's it's a great point. There's a few, a few pieces to this that and perhaps maybe in in reverse, I can try to address it. Certainly, the measures that we're taking at the college are are in line with the public health recommendations and the government regulations that we're operating under. But in in this situation, really, I I would say that, you know, all of these are to help ensure people's safety. I don't know that, you know, with all of these measures, even from a public health perspective and the regulations, there's any any assurances of of safety. So we do what we can with this. In terms of the solution to in doing that, I think it really comes down first and foremost to an individual solution. And and we've seen in our province, you know, as the government goes through processes where they set different rules, you know, no gatherings, stay at home orders. And then we see the news stories about people who are breaking those rules and people who are continuing to gather or continuing to to go out when it's not essential. Much the same way, we've adopted the the public health rules around at an individual level around wearing your masks, physically distancing, washing your hands frequently, protecting your coughs and sneezes, making sure we're not gathering as much as possible. But it relies on every individual at an individual level to have its greatest effect. So really, the the secret to safety, I think, in a pandemic is resting with every single individual. We do have security officers at the doors. Keep in mind as well that the colleges, certainly the Ottawa campus is a very large campus. We have opened about seven entrances as public entrances. Some of those were a little bit strained. There was a little bit of push and pull around, how many do we open? We wanna have the right number to accommodate our our population and and not so many that it becomes cumbersome for us to to manage. So during the the periods that the doors are monitored, the security officers are there to check on people as they come in. But it's really, it's not a rigid check. It's more of a reminder and awareness check to make sure people are doing their self screening. The responsibility for self screening rests on the individual. So and from your question, Leon, it sounds like you're still doing your self screening, which is good. Even if a, you know, as you come in, there is no security guard at that time. I would like to check the individual doors and follow up on this. There may be, I'm aware of two sets of doors that we did respond to requests from the college community to have open prior to the seven AM timeframe to accommodate early arriving staff members. And there there was some discussion around ensuring that they are still doing their their screening checks. So I will, I can follow up on this directly or Leon, if you'd like, you can or I can send you an email after I follow up on it and gather some more information around the specifics of that.
Okay, thank you, Colin. So there'll be some follow up and someone will get back to you, Leon. Thank you for pointing that out.
Okay.
Okay, so our next question goes as follows. Enough topic question and no, there are no off topic questions. This is a great question. Is there any plan to start offering bachelor's degree in certain schools such as SAT? That's a school with advanced technology. I heard that there was or there is a plan to move the college to university configuration. Well, before I I I go to Chris on this, let me weigh in. As your president, I have no plans to turn Algonquin College into university. Thank you very much. And you've heard it here. We are a proud community college that offers a polytechnic level education to our community. And what does that mean? It means that we offer from adult upgrading to pre apprenticeship to apprenticeship to diploma, advanced diploma to degree program and graduate certificate, the full gamut. We do offer honors degree programs and we take great pride in those programs. They are bar none as robust, if not more than some of our university colleagues offerings, simply by virtue of the rigor that they are put through to be offered in the first place and for their consent renewal. So having said that, that doesn't mean we wanna become or have aspirations to become university. What we want is to be able to offer our learners in our community what they aspire to and what the employers demand from our learners, from the talent pipeline that we develop. And that in some instances, it's at the degree level that the requirements are for the level entry positions. And majority of our our programs are a uniqueness to them. You know, Bachelor of Urban Learning and Community Development, for instance. Bachelor of Building Science, you know, they're 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 not your run of the mill degree programs. Not that they're completely unique in the college system. Many of our sister colleges will piggyback on existing programs at the degree level. And but having said that, you know, majority of our program have that cash. So I don't know, Chris, if it's one of those situations where I didn't leave much for you to say, but I I didn't wanna chime in on this one.
Yeah, what Claude said. No, I just one one quick other observation. We we do offer approximately ten, ten, eleven degree programs already. Two points I'd like to 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 make. Our degree programs, while they are honors degree programs, four year honors degree programs, they are different than the degree programs offered at universities. They are still applied degrees. There is still a very substantial component of of rolling up your sleeves and getting immersed in the field and doing things. So they are different than the than the university degrees. And there is already one in the School of Advanced Technology. The Bachelor of Automation and Robotics is moving into its third year this coming fall. So there is one already and I'll and I'll stop with that.
Okay, thank you very much, Chris. Next question comes to us from Shevita Lu Po and it goes as follows. I whoops, I have had in the past few semesters, students with English level that is satisfactory vocabulary wise. However, they are reading and processing information in English slower than locals as well as other international students. Currently, this doesn't make them eligible for an official learning accommodation. So if there isn't something that can official, that can officially level level the field for them. This has put them in a disadvantage. Can something be done to extend the see, that's even a bad word for me, eligibility criteria. Okay, so not sure here, is this a Chris question or partly Chris and partly accommodation?
Well, it's it's partly Chris, partly accommodation and partly entrance requirements. Now, the eligibility requirement, I'm I'm interpreting as a as an entrance requirement.
Okay.
So I I, yeah, I I I certainly can't disagree that that there are language barriers. As we've grown our international population of of students, it it and and in some programs, it's a substantially higher percentage than even domestic students. Those are generally programs that we've designed to particularly appeal to an international student. But that being said, there there are challenges. There are challenges for from a from a student success perspective. We do, we want every single one of our students to succeed. And we we don't want to set up conditions that will that will make it more difficult for them to to succeed. So those entrance requirements based on on standard tests of both written and spoken English are are really the measure that we have of determining whether or not somebody has the language skills to be able to be successful in our programs. There are a couple of programs that have more stringent entrance requirements, language requirements than others. For example, our, I believe our professional writing and our technical writing programs need better than a passing proficiency in the English language. There are programs where there are activities in labs and shops that we need to be absolutely certain that the students are able to understand the safety requirements. I can share a horrible story from from my past as a as a graduate student and an international student, not being able to understand the safety requirements and nearly taking out half the lab one day. Better living through chemistry. So yes, I I agree that that we we don't want to put students at a disadvantage. But the these these tests of 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 English ability are are an imperfect tool. And that there are times that some individual students are going to need a little bit more care and a little bit more assistance than others. But likewise, I mean, for for any of our students, it's not just language. There are the the reasons are as it are as individual as the person itself. Each of us have different strengths and different different shortcomings when it comes to learning. So I'd ask all of our faculty to ensure that they are working with all of our students so that each student has the best opportunity to succeed.
Thank you, Chris. And I do know that we offer services to to our learners. There are multitudes of, you know, whether it's peer tutoring or there are other touch services to help tutor the students or help them be more successful. And that is worth exploring and and providing those references and recommendations to the students. And you know, the our SSS, our student support specialists can assist with that as well. Okay, our next question, let me see here. Next question is, once we are all back to normal and full capacity is allowed, is there a vision to have some courses remain permanently remote? Or is there a vision to have every course return to the classroom? I think you kind of answered that in a previous question, Chris. I don't know if there's a bit more you wish to say on that.
Well, you asked if I could answer that question again. I can, I can. But I think I I think I have already. So whoever asked that question, if you'd like a different follow up, please, please add your question back in. But I I I hope I've answered that one already.
Okay, all right. But we'll go to our next question from Martin Carlson. It says, I am a new part time instructor with the School of Advanced Technology with the Regulatory Affairs Graduate Certificate Program. Our program requires a co-op placement this year. Understandably, there's serious shortage of co-op placement, especially with Government of Canada, the key employer in the really in the regulations world. With the current context, what additional actions is the college taking to bolster the availability of co-op placements with the students? I ask because many of my students are anxious about not finding a placement for May twenty twenty one. I see this issue is starting to create impacts on their studies and their learning. All right, Chris, back to you.
All right. The the co-op office does report into into my office. And so I am, I am very aware of the challenges that we've had with regards to co-op placements, placements for our health and allied health students, any number of our work integrated learning opportunities in addition to co-op. And the the co-op placements, it it depends very much on what the employer is is able to do, both in terms of adhering to restrictions around the pandemic to ensure the health and safety of of their employees, because the co-op student would become one of their employees, whether or not that that co-op placement can be done remotely. And frankly, many businesses have have taken such a financial hit that they've had to retract their their workforce and simply don't have the ability to take on additional additional co-op students at this point. So there are programs where it has been become difficult to find a co-op. But I can assure you that our co-op office is working very diligently with our with our normal, regular employee employer partners as well as 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 constantly, consistently, tirelessly, looking for additional co-op placements for our students. So yes, it it is a challenging time. But we we have, we have had more co-op placements and more students in a co-op stream this past year than we have ever had in our past. And so while there are certain individual areas that have been more challenged than others, as a whole, we've been very successful in in getting co-op placements for our students.
Always a challenge for sure. And thank you very much, Chris, for your response. Certainly something that we endeavor to continuously improve upon. Well, I know that we have more open questions that we have yet to answer. We have come to the end of our hour, our time together. I do wanna give time for Ron to do his closing. And what we said at the beginning of the town hall is that we're gonna take the unanswered questions. We're gonna take those away. We will type up answers and we will put those post them on my seat so that you can see, for those of you who have put up questions, that we've answered them in return. So I want to personally thank all of you who took the time to participate in our town hall this evening. I think we reached close to one hundred people this evening. It's terrific for for a first effort promoting an evening town hall. Tell a friend and let them know how informative this was. And we'll be sending a feedback survey as well. And you can let us know in in that survey what went well, what we could improve upon. And we'll we'll respond to that feedback as well. So thank you very much and I will turn the floor to Ron.
Oh, thank you, Claude. Sorry, my dog is up.
Oh, thank you, Claude. Sorry, my dog has uh decided to become noisy all of a sudden here. Relax. Uh, so, uh, Seku Aguegu, greetings, everyone, again. Um, uh, in the community that I come from, uh, when we do an opening, we always do a closing. And um, and so uh, and so when we do that, uh, we acknowledge all of those who have come before us. All of the work uh and sacrifices and time and energy that they have put in uh during their journeys here. Um, so that we have the ability, the space and the knowledge uh to do the things that we need to do in order to have a good community and to cultivate the good mind. And then we turn our attention to each other, uh, to our colleagues, to our family. Uh, to those who we spend our time with and acknowledge all the time and energy and work that they put in for the betterment of the community and those that are that surround us. And then, of course, we put our attention and our minds to the future generations, those who have yet to come. And some people say those faces that are coming up, because we endeavor to leverage those traditional teachings and uh do our best to make a better world for them uh when they get here. And so with that, uh, we put our minds together. We thank all those different layers of creation, all our ancestors, all of you and all of them who are yet to come. And we put a big thank you and recognition to them. Have a good night, everybody. Goodbye.
Thank you, Ron. Good night, everyone.